It is May, it's not May. It's March, it's March. It is March 21st, 2022, 5:31 PM, and I'd like to call this work session to order. The first thing on our agenda is a city update. So Ms. Solano, please take it away.
Good evening, Madam Chair, City Council, Mayor Gradisar. I have a couple of city updates this evening to share. And the first is a COVID update. The one-week cumulative positivity case count this afternoon on the state's website was 18.4 for the last week of Pueblo cases. And the one-week positivity rate was 1.8%, which is lower than the cities on the front range, so that was good. Pueblo County shows 12 days of sustained hospitalizations as a report this afternoon. Last Friday, I think the report from a CEO at Parkview was five in-house COVID patients. However, the hospital remained full, very full still from sick patients outside of COVID. As another COVID update, or not really COVID, but our health department physician, Dr. Urbina, he will be retiring at the end of March. The mayor will be attending the Board of Health meeting later this week to be providing and sharing well wishes and thanks from the city of Pueblo. And the last COVID update I have is that the health department has provided the city with 2,000, and we have 2,070 rapid take-home kits, COVID tests for distribution to city staff. There are two kits in each box, and if any of you would like any boxes or for your family, just let me know. And we just put in another request today as they're coming from the state and the feds for an additional 500, mostly to the Police Department, Fire Department, and Public Works. Those are the three departments with the largest employees, but they're available to all the city employees for use for themselves and their family. In other city updates, I'll start with ARPA. The ordinances for round four, those were the presentations to City Council in work sessions on February the 14th, February 22nd, and the special session on 3/3. Those are all with the Law Department and the city attorney. He's working on the sub-recipient agreements. There will be seven, eight of them on the March 28th, next Monday's City Council meeting. The ordinance will be present to present to all of you and for vote of approval. We have not heard any news of a delay in the anticipated second tranche of the ARPA funds. It's not out there anyway, other than the mayor's council across the country. So nothing on the Harvard Bloomberg, nothing in National League of Cities, nothing from the Department of Local Affairs. So we know too that last year's deposit of 18.2 million was received in mid-May. So we'll keep you updated, and they'll start to go on deposit watch, but not for about another 30 days or so. We should have updates before then. The mayor also received last week information and invitation from both Senator Hickenlooper and Senator Bennett's office to submit a request for earmark for congressional-directed funding from their districts. And we are working with department directors on that priority list that will be presented to the mayor for a consideration of which is the best to put forward. It has to be shovel-ready, long-term need. There are some other considerations in developing that priority project, and the directors are putting forward their best project. We also received the word that Representative Boebert's office would not be supporting or receiving any congressional-directed spending requests from the city as there was not a support from her office at the national level. The two requests from Senators Hickenlooper and Bennett are due on April the 6th and the 8th. So these are fast turnarounds, and we'll be back to you with a priority list or your top selection here in another week or so. That does conclude the city updates for this evening, and if you have any questions or any specific information you'd like for me to bring next meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Solano. Questions or comments from council? Counselor Flores?
I heard that the vaccination site at the Pueblo Mall is closing, and you might want to discuss that situation.
The vaccine, we have received word that the vaccination site closes on March 31st. And that's the vaccination site only, not the testing site, not Mako, but the state's vaccination site, the drive-through site. So that is coming up pretty quick here. If today's the 21st, it will be closing, and the intent is to return the vaccinations to the health offices, pharmacies, and outside of a public vaccination location. We don't have more information yet on whether the pharmacies are going to expand or if it would be available at doctor sites, but that's to come in the next coming days before the 31st as well.
I understand that the mobile sites will remain open, though, and I don't know who governs those. But according to the article that I read, there'll be two buses in this area for a while. One of them, I think, is signed specifically to Pueblo and the other to southeastern Colorado, but they'll remain available for a while.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Solano. The next presentation on our agenda is the Nature and Wildlife Discovery Center update. So do we have Mr. Spar to the podium, please?
Is this... Yeah. Good to see you. Thank you for allowing me to come in and speak. Several months ago, I think we had a presentation here, and you probably remember that there was a little trouble in the waters at the Nature and Wildlife Discovery Center. Little area of discontent tent by primarily the citizens of Beulah and the area around the Martin Park feeling like they were being left out of the activity. If you remember, the Nature and Wildlife Discovery Center was a merger of the Nature and Raptor Center and the Mountain Park Environmental Center back in 2018. So that was the merger, and as with a lot of mergers, doesn't necessarily always blend well, but we feel like we're on the right track. I just want to thank you, the city, for the support that you've given us continually. Those of you that are new on the council or aren't aware, you own those sites. And we try to operate and maintain and provide services to the community. So that's our relationship is we're the caretakers of your property, and we would like to hear from the community and respond. So with that being said, I have a little presentation to show you what we've been doing, what we do, and are continuing to do. So reminding you again, and you could all see this right on your screens there. So we have really three campuses. We call it the River Campus, the Mountain Campus, and the Raptor Center. Here is a very simplistic mission statement. We are promoting environmental stewardship and population health through nature education, wildlife rehabilitation, and outdoor recreation. And you'll see how that fits into our mission. There's a whole lot of verbiage on here that you probably aren't going to have time to take, because I think I have, what, just two hours to make the presentation? Is that right? No. 15 minutes, right? Or less? So anyway, it's our long-range plans. Basically, the last line there, I think, is what is of concern to you as being fiscally responsible. We want to ensure that we can maintain and sustain this vital wildlife refuge, natural park site along the river, and also the rehabilitation of the raptors that we care for at the Raptor Center. Just a picture here. This is the Raptor Center. I don't know how many of you have been out there recently, but old buildings don't get better with age, sorry to say. This is just typically a picture, and it was very interesting. About two months ago, we had a golden eagle who had been seriously injured. We nursed her back to life. It took about three months so that she was healthy enough to be released into the wild. And I had the privilege of being out at the Chico Basin Ranch on a beautiful afternoon when she was released from her cage. And she took off and circled like eight times, just looking down at us, and then got up in the tree. So, I mean, we just love the raptors and feel like it's an important part of our mission. Obviously, we've got the mountain campus. This is the Horseshoe Lodge. Lots of hikes and trail work going on up there. We had hoped to have a rock climbing venue built there, but we are still in discussion. And I think that the big hurdle is going to be liability insurance. Our insurance carrier says, hey, we don't like rock climbing sites, even though it's gotten to be a very, very popular event for especially young people. I'm not a rock climber, but a lot of young people love it. Here's our Nature Center building at the riverfront. I believe that the new roof was put on. I think the city arranged to have that done, and thank you for that. The new roof was put on last year, and it doesn't leak anymore, which is a good thing. So here's the educational component. The oldest program that we have going is what we call Earth Studies. Earth Studies has been in place, working to environmentally educate 5th graders from District 60 for 20 years. We're in our 20th year of providing this service where the all 5th graders get an exposure to nature through the mountain campus and through the river campus. A very structured educational piece that's important. And it's amazing, because now we talk to 5th graders who went through that program 10, 15, 20 years ago, and it has made a big impression on them. They say it made a difference in their lives. So we think that the Earth Study Program is very important. This is a fairly new program that we started. It's called Earth Keeper Nature School. It is for little guys, preschool, preschool and kindergarten, where these little guys get a chance to get out and experience nature and play in the mud. The parents of these children just tell us how important it is and how the kids just can't wait till they get back out there the next time. Our kindergarten through 5th grade program is a Friday program. Since we have gone to a four-day school, a lot of parents are looking for something to occupy their kids on Friday. So this is our program for the Friday school. It's called, let's see, is that the Grow Wild Forest Club? Again, entertainment, but structured learning. We have capable teachers who are teaching all of these programs. Obviously, we're back now after COVID. We hope that we can open up and have our summer camps. Like all of us, COVID has just changed our life in the last two years, and we're trying to get back to a normal routine by offering summer camps. This is another program that has just started about two years ago. It's called Outdoor Explorations Program. You know that there are a lot of home-school children in our community, and we feel like we can offer a substance to assist the parents in their training of their kids and also give the kids a chance to be social, to socialize in a natural setting. So this has been a very successful program. We're going to continue it. Hopefully, the enrollment last year and into this school year is about 50, and I believe that we have pre-enrollments for 65 students in this program going into next year. What am I not doing? Okay. I'm sorry that you can't see that top line. Yeah, there we go. Teaching children about the natural world should be seen as one of the most important events of their lives. Do you agree? I do, I do. We just think that it's just essential that we maintain these outdoor settings for our kids. Now, we've got a new executive director who will be starting April 4th. Her name is Taylor Driver. She is a local girl. She's graduated from CSUP. She worked with us years ago as a ranger, working in the programs. She moved up to Assistant Program Director, was later a program, handled all the program directing, and then left us. And when we offered this position, she was one of the first to apply and said that she just can't wait to get back to here in Pueblo. She's been living in Denver for about six years. She'll be starting with us April 4th. So we're looking forward to having Taylor aboard. I would like to look forward to maybe in May or June also bringing her with me, and we can introduce her to you, and you can talk to her. So without all of this information, we can't stop without making a wish. So we got two big wishes. The Raptor Center building that you saw earlier is condemned and is not suitable for public use. We have the area that's a very restricted area where the public can come and see the raptors in cages, but the building itself really shouldn't even be occupied by our staff. So on the left, Upgrade the Raptor Center Office Workshop and Rehab Center. I just grabbed a picture off the internet, said, okay, what does it have to look like? Well, it doesn't have to look like that, but it has to look better than what we have now. So we're looking at grant opportunities, and hopefully we can move forward improving the Raptor Center, the physical plan of the Raptor Center. Several years ago, we had a flood there at the riverfront campus that washed away the playground. Parents that come, folks that use the River Walk, that bicycle, that walk, that hike through there, said, wow, why don't you guys have a playground here for the kids? So the other Make-A-Wish we've got is to add a natural playground at the riverfront campus. There's an area just north of the building, across a little pavilion there, that's already been cleared. All we need is playground equipment and mulch and labor. That's all I have. Any questions that you have for me?
Thank you, Mr. Spar. What questions are there from council? Counselor Winter?
Hi, Mike. Thanks for your presentation. What is your revenue source? I mean, I know you're probably charging for the kids to come. You have 65 kids.
Yeah, there are scholarships. Most of our revenue is from grants and support from the city. We have an agreement with you for maintenance for basically the mountain campus. And I think it's $240,000 a year that we get paid monthly for maintenance for that.
Those 65 kids, what are they paying? Do you have any idea?
I believe the fee is $200 per month. But there are scholarships. There are some grant monies available. I don't have the finances here. I can get it for you, but...
What about the little boutique lodge there? Are you making any cash on that?
At the riverfront?
The mountain park, the lodge there? With all the little hotel rooms?
Yeah, it's beginning to be self-sustaining. We basically had everything shut down for the last two years. There wasn't a whole lot of activity. I know that last weekend, we had it full. There was a wedding there. It's a wedding venue, family reunion venue. I think our rental rates are about 15% or 20% of capacity. One of our new hires that we're looking forward to making is somebody who is going to market that and hopefully get it so that it becomes a self-sustaining revenue-producing facility.
Yeah, it seems like the Nature Center, too, should be booked with all kinds of events, weddings, and all kinds of stuff.
It does, and we're working on that. We work on the internet, obviously, offering the services, and you know...
There's a Colorado Wedding Magazine that is published every month that is all outdoor, natural weddings. That might be a good one. But also, you know, the Raptor Center, I think, and Mr. Vaughn's here, he might be able to tell us about this. I think that was condemned when we picked that building up, when the city got it.
It has been condemned its whole life, you know, as long as I've been involved. And it's basically just a workroom.
Okay, all right, thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Counselor Flores?
Yeah, I just had one question, Mr. Spar, and that was the last presentation that was made to us. There was a concern, I think, by a lot of the citizens, especially in Beulah, that there wasn't a connection between the people that want to volunteer to help, you know, the organization. And I'm hoping that you guys are working on that, because I just saw an opportunity there. I really, I don't think any of us at that time with the old board ever thought, or the old city council, I should say, that there was any grave issue. But we thought that there was an opportunity there. It seems like there was a lot of people that wanted to help and just volunteer their time.
Exactly. One of the issues that we found was that... Well, I'm not going to even go there. There was a discouragement by the folks there in the Beulah community that they weren't being called upon or weren't being made aware of the programs. A lot of our hikes and our social activities were canceled through COVID. So, you know, just that stopped a lot of it. I have, since I've been the board chair now for the first three months or almost three months of the year, have been in communication through their Friends of the Mountain Park email site. I've had eight or nine folks respond. I have been communicating with them. We have invited them to join by Zoom our board meetings so that they know what's happening, all of the volunteer opportunities. I've got five or six of the folks that are, you know, ready and willing and able to help us with not only physical work, but also grant writing. We've got folks that have a lot of skills that we can use. So, you know, we're reaching out to them, and we feel like the divide between what they perceived and what we have now is gone.
Counselor Mastry?
Hi. What is the cost of repair? Can that building be repaired, or does it have to be completely replaced?
My background is in construction, and when I see a building like that, all I see in my sight is a bulldozer. We have repaired the roof because it was flooding in through the area where we had the animals, and even in Diana Miller's office was flooding, but the roof is repaired. It's dry. It was strictly a quick fix.
Okay, and so what is the cost of a new building? Have you guys looked into that?
We think it'd probably be a half a million dollars.
Okay, and how long has this been going on, this building?
Oh, it was built in the '30s, I believe. It was built in the...
Oh, no, I'm talking about since you guys have taken it over and you know that it's condemned and you guys are working in it. How long has that been?
I don't know when the Nature Center or the Raptor Center was organized. I was involved prior to my joining this board on the Mountain Park Environmental Center, so I was only casually involved, but I'm guessing that it's probably been like that for 20 years. I don't know. I'd have to get the historical record on. Because it's been operating... Yeah, I don't know, but it's been upwards of toward 20 years, I would guess, of that.
And this is our asset, the city's asset?
Yes.
Okay. Are those city employees that work in that building?
No, no.
Okay.
There are no city employees that work on any of the campuses. We do get assistance from Parks and Rec. Stephen Meyer is very cooperative in helping with equipment and so forth. But we either depend on our staff, paid staff, or volunteer labor.
Well, thank you for the information.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Let's just not let you get left behind. That's been a good program for many, many years.
Well, and there's enough.
You know, I see it in children's eyes every time they go out there. That's just a little amazing place for them to... Both that and the mountain park.
Well, and the Raptor Center area, there's property there that could be developed. So, you know, I mean, anyway, that's our Make-A-Wish.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Spar? Don't you guys also have an observatory up there?
That is CSU Pueblo's property, and they do programs there. It's at the top of the hill. But that isn't, we don't have anything to do with the observatory.
If we were to want to take a tour of the Raptor Center, I haven't been there since I was also in 5th grade, who would we get in contact with if we want a tour?
There is a phone number. I can give you my... I'll tell you what I'm going to do. I've got a list here of all of our current board members, and I'll pass that around. So if you just call any one of us, we are so proud of what we do. We'd love to give you a tour. So I'll just make sure that you all get a copy of this, and I'm on the list. If you call me, I'll arrange a tour.
Thank you. Counselor Winter?
I know this has been talked about before, but, you know, our zoo, I feel so sorry for it. There's nothing really extraordinary going on there. And if you were to combine that Raptor Center and the rehabilitation with the zoo, I mean, it seems like it would be a perfect marketing space for that, and tourists would come to it. I mean, there's a lot of birders out there. I mean, the Sand Hills cranes are in town. I mean, I try to go every year, and, I mean, there are thousands of people that head there. So I don't know if that's possible to have a conversation with the zoo, but I think if you're going to do a new building, that would be an ideal spot.
Well, and it would be an ideal marriage of resources, because, you know, they would have veterinary services. They've got feeding services. I mean, yes, it would certainly be a good idea, and we've discussed it. And Abby and our staff are good friends, so we talk regularly.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Spar. We'll be into future tours, I'm sure, in contact about that. But thank you so much for your time. If there's no other questions from council. The next presentation then on our agenda is around Open Gov, and there's a whole slew of presenters. So I'm not sure who's going to start, but it looks like Ms. Pines, maybe? Ms. Pins? Whenever you're ready.
Okay, I think I'm set here. Good evening. We're here this evening to kind of give you an update on our Open Gov implementation, which we started back in around 2018. It has a lot of fingers that come out of that project. One is really city-specific, but we've gone and partnered with Pueblo Regional Building to do some exchange. And in the future, we'll be doing some work with Pueblo Means Business. So our site is called the City of Pueblo Place. This is where we do all of our permit licensing and code enforcement. Kind of the project history, just real quick, is back in 2018, 2019, we began evaluating several different community development systems. We selected Open Gov in June of 2020, and we worked through that next year and a half to come to a soft-launch implementation, which basically meant we put it out on the website. We didn't publicize it, but we had a lot of people working with it, testing it, helping us through the process. And then in February of this year, we did a hard launch. And Ambrose, the project manager who's sitting next to me, will kind of go over some of the statistics a little later on here. And then we recently just finished our first integration with Pueblo Regional Building on March 1st. So we're exchanging some data and doing some automation through that. The participating departments, we have several departments in the city. I won't go through... that. Um, the participating departments, we have several departments in the city. I won't go through, um, the whole entire list, but you can see we're touching several different departments within the city as well as we're working with Pueblo Regional Building, the, uh, Pueblo Department of Public Health and, uh, Environment, and then Pueblo Means Business, that initiative that, uh, has been worked on for about a year now. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Ambrose Solis, the project manager, who will cover the, the statistics and, uh, continue on.
Good evening. So, here briefly, I'd like to talk about some statistics from, uh, the Open Gov platform that we've been working with. Um, here you can see on the soft launch that, uh, we started off, uh, just a little bit slow, given, given a soft launch. Um, the dips in the graph, um, are over a, uh, over the holiday weeks and, uh, the, the big uptick is from code enforcement complaints, vacant property and excavation permits. And you can also see, uh, a gradual, uh, uh, a steady incline in, in records submitted over time. And I will tell you that from soft launch, we had 99 records submitted and during hard launch, we had 134. Right before this meeting, I actually ran a report and as of last week, over the entire week, we had 222 records submitted just last week. So, the platform is, um, being used more and more every week. So, um, from what we can tell, uh, in getting feedback from, uh, the public, it's, i- it's an awesome tool. It's used more and more every, every week. And so on our, on our final roadmap, um, what we do have is we have a housing go-live. We, we actually just had housing acceptance, um, March 7th, and that was on the one public services application that we had Open Gov build for us. We are in the process of building, uh, the rest of their applications there. So it's kind of their unofficial go-live. Their, their official go-live will be in May, when we actually just kind of flip a switch and turn it on in the system. And that's when they, they actually, uh, want to roll out their applications to the public. Um, second, we have, uh, up there analysis and automate additional business process workflows. And what this means is we basically want to go back through everything that's been built and see what we can improve on, um, because obviously we don't want to just throw everything in there and, and leave it there. We want to see what can we improve on, what, what can we take feedback from the public and, and start making improvements and, and just make better overall for staff, public, everybody involved. Um, another thing I'd like to point out is the complete integration with the Pueblo Means Business portal. So we got that coming up, uh, hopefully later on this year into next year. We do have, uh, demonstrations. We have, uh, Andrew Hayes here to do a, a demonstration for Public Works. Karen Wilson will be doing slides for code enforcement. Marissa Stoller will be doing a live demo, um, for everybody, uh, for city clerk. And then also, um, as an added bonus, uh, update, we do have Regional Building here, who will be giving, uh, an overview of Camino. So, without further ado, Mr. Andrew Hayes.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of council. I, uh, instead of giving a demonstration for Public Works, we've actually demonstrated a few of the permit application processes. You're gonna see enough of the, the platform, I think. But I wanted to talk just briefly about, uh, how we use, uh, Open Gov, what we're doing with it and some of the successes that we've had as a result of its implementation. Uh, in particular, Public Works, along with the other infrastructure departments and planning, uh, we use the platform to receive, review, track and approve applications for land use, subdivision actions, uh, construction and demolition permits, revocable permits, uh, oversized overweight vehicle permits. Uh, it's a forum in which the public can submit complaints or concerns. If there are issues out in town with public improvements, we can receive them there. Uh, there's much, much more. Um, ultimately, a lot of the, uh, land use and, uh, construction-related reviews that, that have, uh, been a challenge to get reviewed and pushed through the system are made much easier through this, uh, through the software. Uh, in combination with a program called Blue Beam, which we use to, uh, review and provide feedback on drawings and, uh, documents that are submitted, uh, we're able to provide very prompt and immediate feedback to, uh, developers, designers, their engineering teams. Um, all of that, all of that feedback, I guess, is also consolidated in a, in a much better way than it used to be where we were providing that feedback in disparate documents from each individual department. Now they're able to get a consolidated set of reviews, uh, and, and basically have a checklist of things that they need to go through. So it makes their review process easier on their end. So it's not just for the city's benefit. Um, obviously, one of the, one of the best pieces of this is individual applicants can kind of track their process, they'll track their application through the process. It's not the black box, maybe that you, that, uh, you know, we have this reputation of being in government. You can actually see where your application is, which department's reviewing it. You get immediate feedback if there's a question or concern. And, uh, as, as in, in Open Gov particularly, as your application, uh, processes, the steps, you're able to see or get an update about each step that is, uh, if a hurdle you've jumped, so to speak. Um, one of the most important pieces of the, uh, Open Gov implementation has been this, uh, integration also with, uh, regional, where there have been city processes and regional building processes that overlap. This is particularly true for building permits. Uh, the other, other routing sheets that come out of, uh, out of regional, we're able to sign those off. And now when we sign in Open Gov, uh, there's an API that allows, uh, uh, our sign-offs in Open Gov to directly update the regional database as well. So, again, faster, real-time, uh, updates within, I think within an hour, actually, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, as soon as we sign off, region's database gets updated pretty quickly. Um, so that's made, made the system, uh, much more user-friendly for, for folks there. Um, at this point, I, I share that with you, I guess, is kind of some of the successes and, and opportunities we have in front of us. Uh, there are other, I won't say limitless, but many other opportunities also to employ the software, uh, for o- o- other types of processes we do. So for instance, at our recycling center, uh, we currently require folks to come in to the office to buy vouchers for large item drop-offs and other, other programs. So we're looking at ways to implement, uh, uh, a payment system there under which folks can get online, get their voucher, not even have to come to the office and again, take a whole step out of that process. So those kinds of opportunities are in front of us and Open Gov presents a platform that allows us to do that. So with that, I'll, uh, I'll get out of the way and let somebody who has a real demonstration for you, uh, show you this, show you the system.
Good afternoon, or good evening, everyone. So, um, I chose to, to show a little bit about, what am I doing wrong? The red one? Yeah. Okay, there we go. Sorry. I thought I would show a little bit about, um, how this interacts with the citizen in regard to code enforcement complaints. We, at one point, were using a system called Request Tracker. It was in addition to our phone call complaints or our email complaints. That's been shut down at this point for us and it's been redirected through this Open Gov system. It's easier to use. It automates it for us better. Um, I no longer have to take a complaint from one system and plug it into another system so that we can track it from there. Um, this also gives a little bit of feedback to the citizen once their complaint, um, has been verified. So this is the, the initial screen that a citizen will look at when they come in to enter a complaint. Um, and I just have run through them real quick. It's pretty self-explanatory, but please keep in mind, when you're showing slides of, of steps that happen, it seems like it's tremendous, but it's really not. It's, it's actually very quick and very easy to navigate through. So the first thing you'll do is, is select the reported issue or file a complaint. Um, i- i- it's all self-explanatory, so, and I think you have the screen, so now you all know, will know how to do it as well. Um, and you apply. I know apply online doesn't always sound like it's, it's what you're looking for. You're wanting to file a complaint, but it's just the verbiage that, that this system contains. Um, so then you would select an address. A dropdown menu happens when you start typing in an address, everything that, that matches that. So you would select from that list of what matches what you're looking for. Um, you verify that the address and the information is correct, if you can, and scroll down to the bottom of the screen and click next. Then this screen wants you to select the type of violation or the type of complaint that it is. And it's just a checkbox and all you have to do is click on each box to select the issue that you're having. And then you up, or you can upload any pictures. If you have pictures, a lot of people like to send in photographs so they can upload it to the system, add that as evidence for, for that case, and click next. Um, and then you scroll down a little bit more and then you want to confirm and submit. And that is all there is to it. It's incredibly quick. Like I said, it seems like it's a lot of screens, but it's incredibly quick. It's incredibly easy for the citizen. And as soon as I get this information, which is immediate, um, I, I try to go in and review that information. I verify it and get it assigned to one of our officers. If that person entered their name and email account, then they will get an email update that says, "We got it. It's been assigned." If something else happens, there's, we have to be careful about the information that we give out, but they'll get information that it's moving on in the code enforcement steps so that they will know something is happening to, to that complaint at that time. Um, they don't have to leave a name and they don't have to leave an email address. They can submit a complaint anonymously, but that would mean that they don't get those email responses. And that is all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Um, does, do people have to have an account? Like, do they have to make an account and they can just do it?
They can just enter it in.
And then it sounds like then if you have an email and a name and you can keep giving them updates until the case is completely closed.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Thanks, Karen. Thank you. I'll turn it over to Marissa.
Hi.
Oh, she's hiding over there.
I don't know if this microphone works that well, so let me know if you need to turn it up or anything. Um, so, we are going to, um, look at a live site demo. So what Karen just showed was an excellent representation of how you would submit your application. And, um, what I want to show you now is what you do for those longer applications such as the liquor, tobacco, marijuana licenses and in my perspective, but also, you know, with planning and some of the other types of applications, how you see how it's progressing in a system, as Andrew talked about. So I'm logged in to the system here. Um, Karen also showed you how to get to this point. Um, so I can go over here to my account and it has a whole dashboard of things, um, that are looking for my attention. Can you see those? Okay, on your screen, Stu? Okay, let me see if I can pull that over. Does that work? Lovely. Okay. So you can see here, um, this is kind of your dashboard. I'm gonna go ahead and go into an actual application here. So this is as if I am, um, a citizen that has filled out a liquor license application. And I can go down to my application and actually take a look at where it's at in the progress. So, um, I have all of my submission information. I have any attachments that I might have uploaded as part of that application and I can, um, I can upload a new version, uh, if need be. Um, and then I can add guests to it. So a lot of our businesses have, you know, attorney's offices or accountants that have some documentation that's important, that they want people to be able to add or to see where they are in the application. So you can add additional guests, um, here. Um, and then it shows you exactly where you are in the process. So you can see all these green checkmarks are completed steps. These blue ones are ones that are in progress. And then this is the, um, the, what else has to be completed. So, uh, there's a couple of things I want to show you here. Um, one of the, the great things is that you can have this instant communication here. So you can message whatever step you're at and get directly with that department. So previously in the city clerk's office, we've kind of had to be that middleman where we say, "Oh, you know, sales tax, um, you're not current with your sales tax. You need to go straighten that out with them before we can continue your process." So here, they can specifically talk to sales tax, um, and say, "Hey, what do you need?" Or sales tax can talk back to them and say, "Please call us at this number so we can get your, you know, um, your monthly straightened out." Um, and you can see here, we had this conversation, uh, this, I demoed this, um, previously at an SBDC course, which is on our liquor, um, site on the City of Pueblo, if you'd also like to see more of this. Um, but basically you can just message back. This is, um, Tonya from the fire department, uh, help me out here. And, um, you can have that conversation back and forth with them. You can call the department, uh, whatever you need to do to get, get it all straightened out. Uh, we can also issue documents here. So you can see, um, we have a notice of hearing. So you can print this document and you'll see, um, here's that document that was, um, sent. Basically it says, "Okay, this is your hearing date. You need to come here at 6:00 PM." Um, so we, we can, you can have all those documents stored here as well. Um, and then the other thing that I kind of wanted to show was the online payment procedure. So here you can see, um, you've got a, a fire inspection fee and you've got your options, um, here to pay. So you can pay with a credit card for a certain amount processing fee. Um, this amount depends on the amount that you have here. Uh, so it's a, it's a, a direct percentage. Uh, you can pay using your bank account and that's what we actually recommend for the most part because that is a flat 5.50 fee. So for, um, like our marijuana grows in particular, you'll have those, you know, 15,000, $20,000 fees. So if you, if they, you do it using the bank account, they can pay that 5.50 flat fee because you can imagine a, as a percentage when you're paying $20,000, that can potentially be quite a lot. And then of course, you can always still send checks or bring checks into the clerk's office, um, and all those other departments, um, and pay, uh, pay us directly at our front desks. And that is an easy way to do that. Uh, and then I kind of went over the attachments again, but I just want to say, a, a lot of times what you'll get in some of these spaces is we'll say, "Oh, we need a, a better diagram, a better map of your diagram." So they can just upload that here with a conversation. They don't necessarily have to come into our office anymore. I did talk to my office staff today and they were saying how much they think that the foot traffic to our office has gone down because of the ability to do people to do this online. So, uh, happy for any questions. This is the live site. So this is exactly what someone would see if they're in the middle of the application process. Um, they can see exactly where they're at and, and what departments they need to, to pass to continue on. Great. Unshare all this. And then moving on, I think we've got Corey from Regional Building is next. I guess one other thing I want to mention is, um, the liquor licenses and marijuana licenses are integrated with Regional Building and with, uh, the Health Department. So we have set people who sign off from those two departments that go into our, um, licenses and they've been great to work with, very easy to work with, very happy to get all that in place. So thank you for that. Into the Health Department, too.
Yes, I got you. Uh, for those of you that don't know me, I'm David Vaughn. I'm the director of Pueblo Regional Building and I have about three of you there. So I need to meet you in person a little bit. And also have Corey Bassett here. He's our new IT man. So he's the head of it now and we have the older one, uh, Mr. Kluci, who is now going to be a consultant with us. So we'll, we use him right along with us and, and basically we're busy enough to meet both of them anyway. So that's pretty much where we are. And we've come a long ways with this system. It seems to be doing well. I'm pleased to work with the city. And I think I've learned quite a bit too, as we do all of this. I mean, as a department head, I'm learning that we've got to monitor what goes on just because we have a machine. If somebody's not reading the machine, we don't get anything happening. So I've seen some large things happen that are, you know, I'm needing seven sign-offs from all these different departments or I can't sell a permit. Sometimes there are large permits and we'll find somebody at the other end that should be reading it and finding out what's wrong. They, at their end, maybe a contractor or their end is, uh, architect and they're so busy, they don't read what the computer says here. So they don't even take the time to take a quick look at why they're not getting a permit. I mean, that sounds ridiculous when you've got a eight million, eight hundred million dollar job going on and you don't read it. But they don't. So it's to us, I think, to see which one of these things isn't functioning and why it's not functioning. About every week, we need to look into the permits that are out there and the ones we're trying to get. And are they held up for a, a good reason or maybe a not a good reason? What's the... What's the wrong? And take it upon ourselves to make the phone call to either the city or whoever's got this problem. The architect, make a quick phone call and find out what, what really is wrong. I mean, sometimes it's very simple and all you need to do is pick up the phone as a department head, find out the problem, make the problem work. And by doing that, you can move things along very quickly because it stalls sitting there needing that last piece. Sometimes I, I can't move it because there sits there where I'm needing a fire sign off or I'm needing a one, any one of the pieces I've not got. And without it, the 10 day thing goes right out the water because we can't make a 10 day process if everybody's not playing. So even with the computer, you've got to take the time inside of your own offices. And make sure that you're moving the piece and what's wrong with that piece and talking to the person that needs to talk to, to move it. And I think that that is the most common sense piece of all of this. We gotta have that happen. Otherwise things just don't move. And you can hold up gigantic jobs because of one simple thing. And when I, you know, in the case of the, of the mill, I found the head architect. She was nice as could be and I happened to get her on the first dial. And I said, you know, I need this one piece, one document for the fire department. We need it badly. And she started laughing. She said, I'm so busy, I didn't even open that thing. I said, well, we need to because we're holding up millions of dollars. And she laughed and she said, you'll have it in two hours. And I did, which made everything better and we down the road. So that's the thing I want all, everybody to realize is to take the time and the effort, whether it's your problem or not, and look into it. And make that situation move and it, and it will. And we founded our office now, we're, we're way into probably 75% on an, on, running online. I used to have a whole front office full of people coming down. And after COVID, they learned to use the machine. Now they're drinking coffee at home and doing their business online. And we're not seeing the whole lines out the front door. There's no more of that. So now we're, we're down to a crowd that still likes to be in person. That crowd is not going to change. I mean, once it gets as old as me, they start changing, but otherwise they're not going to. So the new crowd though, likes the electronic system and it's really what's happening. So it's, it's something that's made it really work well. And the better we build a system, the better it works. But it, it is got problems still with every now and then. You've got to keep tweaking it all the time to make it better. And at the same time, take a look at everything and I think it'll function well. And all that Corey show us what he's doing now at our part of this thing.
So, um, as they've explained, the Open Gov is come quite a ways away, uh, from where we first started off with the, uh, soft launch. Keeping track of the, uh, projects as they've gone through the routing process has been really good. Helped move a lot of that forward because now that communication is right there and available for them to be able to see it. Through the API, we do get hourly updates on anything that's been completed through the city. So that gets updated into our database every hour. What we are going to show a little bit today is, uh, leads more towards the end product of what we're kind of wanting to lean towards. Um, and that's going to be that Pueblo Means Business kind of integration. So, um, Calucci has been working on the sidelines as a consultant for us, uh, put together a lot of the demonstration that this is a kind of leading towards. It's kind of an idea of what we would like the Pueblo Means Portal to look like. So it's just a kind of a idea of what that can be. It does use a program called Camino. It builds a, uh, kind of a guide that shows how to go through the process. And I'll go a little bit over that if you care. Okay. So, uh, this is kind of a splash page of what you would see when you first land into the portal. It's just real kind of standard, gives a good idea of, uh, you know, our, our water, uh, river walk there and a couple of quick links. Towards the bottom of this would be a project portal. And this is a great starting point for where you can look as a one stop shop. So you're looking at, uh, your broad categories, like if you're doing developments, uh, wanting to do a building. If you're looking for licensing, that whole one stop shop ideas, uh, where that can lead us towards. And of course, if, uh, you're a returning user, you have, I know what I need. Go to it real quick. To follow that process a little bit, um, since we're the building department, we'll focus on the construction side of that a little bit. You go into, I want to do a building. The guide would be able to break down residential, commercial, however you want to span that. We have a new residence going up. So from there, we'd be able to narrow that down a little further. Of course, if you're doing repairs or additions, you can, uh, veer towards that. Uh, once you figure out what it is that you're wanting to do, the, uh, a program with, uh, Camino says, well, where do you want to put? So from here you can do your address search. We have a, uh, integration with some of the, uh, data from the county to be able to do the parcel mapping there. And that would allow you to say, okay, I want to put it right on top of that building there. And that'll, uh, pull up, uh, all the parcel data, um, associated with that. Ideally, once, uh, the county comes, uh, around with a, uh, universal, uh, address, street address map, we'll be able to integrate things like which, uh, utilities are there, whether it's, uh, Black Hills, San Isabel, Pueblo Water Works, Pueblo West, so forth. And that information will ultimately help us build this guide. So with that guide, it's going to say, okay, you need to talk to the city's, uh, departments, water, so forth. And that helps the customer understand where exactly they need to go in that process. From that, uh, guide, it's going to have links to those, uh, departments, whether it's, uh, cities, Open Gov, counties implementation. Then over to us where it'll be able to, uh, build a routing sheet. And most of that's going to be pre-filled again, based off that information. And this is actually somewhat live at this point. So Mike has done an awesome job at being able to move a lot of this stuff into a working demo. From here, you are able to, uh, integrate some of your contractor pieces. So, uh, for example, if you have multiple projects going on, you'd be able to say, okay, I want to check on, uh, my new residence on Inieto Court. Uh, the right side of that is our project details. This is a fancier version of what our current site looks like. But again, it's going to show city wastewater signed off on this date. The send email or go to website, those will be links to the Open Gov instances. Ideally, uh, if we have a high enough level of integration, you'd be able to, uh, be signed into this portal. Um, and go straight into, uh, that project, whether it's on Open Gov, uh, or via ours. So with this, the guide, this is, uh, kind of the backbone of that idea. Kind of went through that a little bit, those card links, uh, as some of those other options there. So for example, you can do business licensing, contractor licensing, uh, Mike's favorite dog licensing. Of course, if you click on some of those, the guide's going to be pretty quick. Just, you know, okay, go, go up to Colorado Springs to get your pet license. But the versatility of that is, uh, very wide. You can build those workflows out very quickly. Some of those smaller ones, you know, it takes just a few minutes to have a viable guide form. Um, and this is the Camino dashboard. This is what, uh, the customers would see on their end as far as, uh, once they're logged into that system. And it, uh, does mimic a little bit of what Open Gov does as far as that simplicity of, hey, I got this project, this. So that concludes what I have for you guys. Not to answer any questions.
Thank you, um, Councilor Graham.
So Camino and Open Gov are two separate things working together. So who is, who's transferring that information back and forth? And do you have to have two separate accounts? Do you have to have an Open Gov account and a Camino account?
So. One of those, uh, pieces, Open Gov, even if every entity was in Open Gov, at this point, they're all separate entities. It's like having three separate cars. You're all driving Teslas, but you know, you, you can't transmute between the vehicles. So, uh, ideally with the API, uh, going through that portal, the gateway, uh, there would be a single sign on type process that'd be able to negotiate through those. Uh, sharing a token. That's something that we've gotten into the very early process to see how that would work, what the costing of that would be with the portal.
Other questions? Um, I just want to clarify the timeline. So it sounds like the, that what you just showed in terms of the contractors and the zoning and things like the permitting is already rolled out?
As far as the, uh, us working with the open city.
Like Camino, like people are already using Camino?
That, no.
Okay.
We're still working with the procurement, uh, with the other agencies to be able to decide on which path to go with. We're supposed to have a meeting here in a next tomorrow with Open Gov to see what their pricing options would be for something similar to that.
And after that, is there, is there like an end date at all of when that would roll out or go live?
We need to have a, a idea of which one we're going with first, honestly.
Okay. Um, I also, um, yeah.
So we're working with Pueblo Means Business, um, in the county. And what we're looking at is two different options. One is Camino. I was screaming. So we're looking at Open Gov because there's some advantages to all entities being with Open Gov and sharing that data exchange. However, Open Gov's not coming as quickly as we'd like with pricing and development efforts. So, um, Mike Calucci from Regional, um, found Camino. And what he's able to do, he's done this, this initial development in less than probably a month. And it is so much more advanced than where we're at right now with Open Gov under the Pueblo Means Business umbrella. So Mike is building this out, but it's a group between the county and the city and all of the other agencies that participate in Pueblo Means Business to kind of determine the path and the direction that they're going to go. I believe you guys, uh, Regional Building will probably be looking at Camino for some efforts, other efforts on their part. So there'll be some integration there, but there's still a lot of to do work or, um, legwork to do. Related to how we're going to move forward with that, with the portal. Does that kind of help a little bit?
Mayor.
Well, I just want to make sure that you all understand that we've spent a lot of time, a lot of money from the city's perspective on this system and trying to get this electronic permitting system done. The county and Pueblo West are probably months behind us, I think, in terms of, of that development. But you need to appreciate that this has not been done anywhere in the country. Where you've had this many organizations working through one portal to make it as easy to do business as possible. Get permits, get inspections as what we're doing here in Pueblo County. So it's taken a long time. I think there, as Lori indicated, there's still a lot of work to do, but it's going to be worth it in the end. Because, uh, you know, it's going to seem like a seamless system for people to come in and, and do that. As Mr. Vaughn suggested, a lot of people, that's how they like to do it now. They could just sit there and do it, click on buttons and away they go.
Ms. Solano.
You know, for, for me to be able to understand, and I, I, I welcome President Graham's question. This is intended to be seamless to the user. So they won't know whether they're in Camino or Open Gov. When they get in, it's going to be able to track it. When the Regional Building transfers to the wastewater, the API automated processing, some other I initiative there. It will do the transfer from Camino to Open Gov that will be seamless to the user. All they'll know is they're connected from, um, the Regional Building to all of a sudden City Wastewater Department. And the magic of the technology will make it happen. And those connective pieces are still what they are, are continuing to work on. And so I ask all those same questions, you know, all the time. How will the, how will the citizen know to move from one to the other? And, and you know, Lori sits in my office and says, no, 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 the system's going to move for them. Thank you.
Councilor Flores.
Yeah, I wanted to ask about, uh, the, initially, probably six months ago, when I had her, um, had been brought up to date on what was being done here. The example that was used as a developer coming into Pueblo, starting from scratch, that it could take as much as about six months to go from the process of just an idea, uh, you know, getting all the information that he needed, all the permitting and all of that, that it would take about six months. And that Open Gov and even with Camino, that we could effectively as a city, uh, reduce that to maybe four months. Which I was told is, is pretty good from beginning to end. Has that, has that changed any or is that still, uh, our goal obviously is to be more efficient, more productive, to make it easier for developers, uh, not to get disillusioned and leave, but to, to finish their projects. Is that still about where we want to be as far as a project from beginning to end? And maybe reducing that process by two months or is that, is it even better than that?
So, uh, as far as reducing the processes, the majority of that time savings was looking at, uh, several processes that could have been run concurrently instead of saying, okay, now you gotta do subdivision review and then you gotta do, uh, planning review. And then you gotta submit to the city for, for the other processes. If you did a lot of that stuff all at the same time, yes, you could cut a significant amount off. As far as the end result, if it was two months, it, it, it's all dependent upon situations.
Sure, sure. I was interested in your comment, Dave, about, uh, people not returning the information that you need or your call. In the old days, we used to have what was called suspense systems or tickler systems. And you'd get a second request. Wouldn't this sophisticated system just do that automatically for you?
We might be able to build it into doing that. The problem is sometimes it's lost over in one of these other departments, not ours, but I still can't move the product without the piece to me. So we're, we're looking at ruffling feathers all down the line here. If something's hung up, then it can be hung up for six weeks, sometimes or longer. And sometimes it's very simple to fix, but if nobody, they, they did it proper in the computer. I don't mean to rank on city people here. City people done their job. What happens is, is it gets to the architect that's supposed to be looking at it and nobody looks. So it just sits there. Well, pretty soon they say, well, we can't get a permit. They, they can't because nobody even opened up the thing to find out.
That's the point I want to make is that the city always gets blamed for the delay. When a lot of times it's the professionals representing the owners who have not done what they're supposed to do. As, as Dave suggested, they didn't open the email to see that, hey, we need this information from you before you can get a permit. But it's always the city that gets the blame. So this will, this system will have accountability for everybody because the owner will be able to see where this is at in the process and what needs to be done by who. Rather than just say, oh, you know, it's those guys at the city or those guys at Regional Building that won't, won't let that happen.
So for years, the building department gets the blame too, because I'm the last guy. The only problem is I need all this people to play, seven, eight, 10, sometimes 10 sign offs I need. And then it only takes one not to sell the permit. But that, that one that's hanging in there, somebody has to be accountable at that end and say, whoa, wait a minute here. What's wrong? Why aren't somebody picking this up? And make the phone call or, or email something to where they realize that they're short this piece. Sometimes they've never even looked. I mean, and you get good architects that take care of their job immediately. Then you get the one that just eight hundred million dollar project, she's so busy, she never opened the computer. So you got that. But she was very happy to take care of me when I called her. I mean, I got it in two hours, just exactly what we needed and we're back in business. So I think we've come a long ways finding a way to put this all together. And yes, we should be able to shorten the time down.
Thank you.
Quite a bit. And we've done that very same thing at our department. We've now take plans in, they don't just go to the building guy. Now they spread out to everybody in my department, all at the same time. And that happened two years ago. And what that does for you. What that does for you is everybody's working on the plan the same day start, 10 days of started. And all of them got that plan to do and they're reviewing daily at my office in the morning. First hour, they're sitting right up there diligently plumbing, electrical, mechanical, everybody's looking at that plan besides the building. What that does is move it all together at one time. Do I take a little risk at that? Yes. Once in a while we have a firewall, something happens there that one of them didn't realize. So there's a little risk, but I'm, it's worth the risk because I can catch it later on in the job site. So now I've moved the speed down to where the 10-day thing should work at our office. I mean, I can't promise 10 days everywhere we're going here, but I think that we can move this process by looking into what we're doing to quicker all the way around. But some meetings or you gotta work on that. Sometimes you have meetings that are 30 days out, 60 days out, that causes you to get hung up. So we need to work on some of that too. That's just all in my opinion. Once in a while I overdo it here, but I want you to realize what's going on and why.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Um, I'm really looking forward to the rollout of this platform, especially with the Pueblo Means Business. I think developers and the contractors that I talk to are looking forward to increased accessibility so that way where they're not traveling, you know, department to department. And it's just streamlined. Um, and I also think I'm really pumped about the code enforcement, um, ability to, with the new system. So that's, that's going to be, I think, something really exciting. So if there's no other questions from council, thank you so much to all of the presenters for OpenGov. We look forward to hearing more, um, as it is rolled out in late 2022, early 2023 with Pueblo Means Business. Um, the next then presentation that we have is the Pueblo Boulevard Access Control Plan Study. So do we have Mr. Sprague?
Yeah, I'm on, I'm on the Zoom call. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, I'm here.
We also have Mr. Hayes at the podium as well. Um, so whenever you both are ready.
Am I able to just share my screen to share the presentation? Will that work?
We have the presentation, David. So we're going to set it up here and if you'll let me know when you're ready to switch slides, we'll move it forward. I'm gonna, just real quick to the council and then we'll get started. Good evening, Madam Chairman and members of council again. This particular presentation is, uh, about the Pueblo Boulevard Access Control Plan Study that has been underway for a few months now. Earlier this year, I provided an email about a public forum that had occurred. That was attended by several of you and, uh, several members of the public as well that might be interested stakeholders in the project or in the process. That particular, uh, study relates to, uh, maintaining, uh, control of accesses to businesses, to properties that, uh, take direct access off of Pueblo Boulevard. This is the entire corridor from the south end, north end. Uh, so all the way from Highway 25, uh, all the way west and north to Highway 50. So, uh, this particular plan certainly, um, has the potential to, uh, I guess, impact property owners along that path. But it also has the opportunity to ensure that Pueblo Boulevard remains a viable transportation corridor, uh, and thoroughfare through town. So, uh, it's a three-way, uh, project that's been going on between the, uh, city, between the county and CDOT. And so I'm going to turn it over here to David Sprague with Atkins Global. He is CDOT's consultant, uh, on this particular study. Uh, we're also joined tonight by Valerie Vehill, Art Gonzalez and Michelle Regalato from CDOT, uh, from their Access Control Management Unit. So with that, I'll turn it over to David.
All right. Thank you very much, Andrew. Good, good evening, uh, council members. Thank you very much for your time. Um, the purpose of tonight's, uh, presentation for you guys is threefold here. We want to update you on what we've been doing over the last few months, uh, outline for you kind of what the next steps are going to be and then really give you an idea of why we're looking at, um, Highway 45 uh, in terms of doing an access control plan at that site. As Andrew had mentioned, uh, we, as we go to the next slide, the study area does look at the entire highway from uh, I-25 at the south end all the way to US 50 at the north end. It is broken into two primary sections. The south end from I-25 to Thatcher is what's called a regional highway. Uh, it looks at providing a little bit more flexibility in terms of access to properties along the highway. It's not focused so much on throughput or speeds, but it is focused more on being in an urban area and really, uh, balancing access with operations and safety of the highway. The north end then from Thatcher up to US 50 is what's called an expressway. That is a little bit more stringent when it comes to the type of access and the amount of access that should be allowed to the highway. Uh, you're looking generally to provide access only to properties where they don't have like a side street or another access location. Uh, primarily try to keep your intersections about at least a mile apart or a half mile apart. And so it becomes a little bit more, uh, uh, less balanced toward access and more balanced toward throughput operations and speed. Um, it's intended really to, to allow vehicles to travel at higher speeds and have fewer access points to deal with. Um, as we move on then, uh, just wanted to give credit to the project team. On the next slide with, um, who all is participating in this, uh, it's been a great, uh, effort so far. It's been enjoyable. We have been conducting monthly, uh, calls, uh, with, with everybody, uh, from the county, the city and CDOT to really make sure as we're, we're doing this, we're, we're biting this off in small chunks and really giving everybody an opportunity to participate, have their input, uh, review documents and everything before we, we move forward in, into any other steps or decision-making processes. So we'll move on to the next slide. Our, our, our purpose and goals for the access control plan are shown here. You know, there's the standard things like trying to make things safer and operate better, but the, the key one is the bottom bullet there where it, it's really to provide the county, the city and CDOT a, a, a tool uh, as they move forward as development occurs or as redevelopments occurring or as access requests are coming in. The, 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 the plan is really intended to allow, uh, the three agencies to work together, make sure that, um, that access does not become, uh, too excessive along the corridor uh, and really working together to, to develop, make sure that the highway meets its goals, provides the access that it needs, but does it in a safe and, and efficient manner. Uh, the next slide just gives you a quick overview of, of a typical access control plan process and where we're at. Uh, we've conduct, we've conducted a lot of the preliminary study. We proposed a lot of the improvements already and we've already conducted our first round of public outreach as Andrew had mentioned a couple of months ago. And so we're still in that public outreach process. We will do, uh, an additional outreach in the future uh, once we finalize our recommendations. And then as you see through the process here, there are several more steps before it becomes official. What's some of the reasons why we're looking at 45? Um, there's a couple. One is the existing access conditions. Um, you can see a table here in front of you primarily focusing on segment one, which is that segment from I-25 to Thatcher. There's a lot of access points in there. You have a lot of driveways, a lot of homes actually have driveways directly onto the highway. Um, a lot of, of streets. Um, and so the density is much higher than what we would like it to be. So we look for ways to combine accesses or move accesses around to maybe get us more into align with where we would like for it to be. And so that's one of the main reasons why we're looking at this as we move towards segment two. Uh, you can see the density of, of the access points becomes a lot less and it's a little bit more already in line with what we would like for an expressway to have. And so we're really there looking to come up with ways to, I don't want to say prohibit, but we, we want to really control where any future access points come in along that undeveloped stretch up there. And then when we go to the next slide and we look at safety, uh, we, we looked at all the crashes coming out of, of the, the reporting database for CDOT over a five-year period. The highway has, uh, more crashes than average or what is expected for this type of a highway. Um, and that is primarily due to the fact that there are just so many access points. It's so dense, so dense along the highway there. And it's not just that there's so many access points. It's that there are, a lot of them are, are, are just stop controlled for the side street and they all allow full movement. Um, there's no, no restrictions of any kind of access. So you have a lot of vehicles turning onto and off the highway. And every time that a vehicle does something like that, you create conflict points resulting in a lot of crashes. So those are really the two main reasons why we're, we're looking at the highway and looking at access. Moving on then. So there's a couple of things that we do to really help, one, come up with good ways to control the access, either it's existing or future access points. And, and this exhibit here shows, you know, there's, there's things that we can do to, to utilize the existing roadway combining access points. You know, closing access points is, is something that, that we don't like to do unless we really have to do or, or we really rely on that as sort of a last, um, effort if, if all other things are not really an option. But we've, we try to, um, uh, employ as many of these options as we can as we're going through the corridor and, and we look for ways to then, uh, reduce those, that density and space it out and, and reduce the number of conflict points along there. Speaking of conflict points on the next slide, there are a lot of different ways that we can reduce conflict points. As I mentioned, the top intersection there is very typical of what you see uh, along the highway, full movement, a lot of conflict points, both for vehicles, pedestrians, bicyclists, everywhere where lines cross. Then you start adding in even multiple lanes on a highway and that number goes up exponentially from there. So there's just a lot of, uh, uh, of conflict points. So how do we look to reduce those? We look for recommendations of, you know, we can keep the intersection full movement, maybe look at roundabouts. Uh, we can look at three-quarter movement, you know, try to eliminate as many of those movements that may be able to be done at adjacent intersections, um, or, or neighboring intersections where we can then eliminate some of those mid-block conflicts that are unnecessary. And as we keep going, you can see, you can go to right in, right out. That reduces it even more. And then of course, if you close something that that completely eliminates the conflict points, but then doesn't make, uh, the neighboring property owners or the neighboring people very happy if we close things. So where are we at again in the process right now? So we've gone through, we've looked at the highway we made using those techniques for, for controlling access points and looking at conflict points. We've made our initial recommendations and we went to the public. In January, at the end of January, uh, we provided, uh, the public with an opportunity to meet with the team directly if they wanted to. We were in there in person and we also developed a virtual website, um, that people were able to go to virtually if they didn't feel comfortable going to a public meeting. Um, and they, they could review all the same information that was presented at the actual open house. Uh, they could propose, um, they could, uh, put in, uh, comment forums and leave comments and, and, and we will get back to them if, if they did that. The open house itself, uh, we sent out flyers to over 500 addresses along the highway. We advertised in the newspapers. We had information up on the city, county and CDOT sites. Uh, we, we went out to some of the business organizations along the, the, along the highway, along Pueblo Boulevard. And so we really tried to get out there in every way possible that we could advertise it. Uh, it was not, not as attended as we would have liked. There were about 25 people in attendance at the actual open house. We did have about 150, uh, unique visitors, uh, visit the virtual website um, and left a few comments. Um, and we, we were able to reach out and address those comments subsequent to the meeting. And as we move forward, we are planning on our second round of public involvement occurring, probably coming up here in early, early May. And we will go through the same process. Okay. What will the final plan do? Um, there's a lot of things that it does. Supports the long-term plans. You know, I, I've listed off a lot of the things here. Uh, we try to address all the concerns raised by the stakeholders. Outlines the conditions that must be met before change can occur. And so in the document, there's actually a table that comes along with the access control plan that'll tell you like, hey, we're going to make this access go from full movement to right in, right out, but that will only occur under these conditions. And it outlines exactly what those conditions are. For example, if there's a safety concern, if there's an operational concern. So those are things that could trigger, uh, the, the potential to reduce an, an access from full movement to something less than full movement or even close it if necessary. As we move on then, what won't, what the final plan does not do, it doesn't identify any specific projects. Um, this is a plan. It's just a planning document. It's to be implemented over time as things occur along the highway. Um, but a couple of, of key things there is that it does not prohibit future amendments to the final recommendation. So is part of the process, there will be an intergovernmental agreement that will be signed by the three cooperating agencies. And in that agreement, it's, uh, lays down exactly how, uh, the process, the, the plan can be amended in the future. It is an easy process. Um, it is something that has been utilized in the past on other access control plans. And that's laid out. And more importantly, it doesn't preclude any future development along the highway or any type of plans for any development or redevelopment that may be already in the works or that are coming up, uh, in the near future. Next steps in the process, obviously we want to finalize the plan. Uh, so we'll be making those final recommendations, uh, get those recommendations accepted by going back out to the public, presenting them to, to the elected officials, both the city, county. Uh, we'll prepare that intergovernmental agreement, uh, circulate that through, make sure it goes through legal reviews from both the agency, which that actually is in, uh, progress right now. Uh, that is going through the both city and county now. Uh, then we'll, we'll, uh, we'll specify how the access control plan can be amended, which I already talked about there. Uh, and then the most important thing is, is, um, you know, after it's signed and in place is it, it really is then on the city, the county and CDOT to work together to, to really make sure that then the plan gets implemented over time as, as it's needed or as changes occur along the highway. And implement, the implementation of the plan, the way that usually occurs is it's a phased approach. It's not a single project. Access control plans would not be a single project along the highway. It's usually only done as you see in those triggers down there. Uh, the, the key one being the first bullet, the part of development or redevelopment, someone will come in and say, hey, I want to build something here on this open parcel or hey, I want to re, redevelop a, a parcel into something new. And that's really when, uh, the city and the county and CDOT can work together to pull the plan off the shelf and say, hey, we made this recommendation for access at this location. Can you guys please try to conform to that plan? And then if it's just impossible for them to conform, that would where, that's where like the amendment process would come into place if, if necessary. And I know that's a real high level overview of where we're at. Um, if you want to glance ahead a couple of slides, um, Andrew, um, just to give them an example of kind of what, one of the maps. If you want to go to the next slide, it'll give an example of what the maps look like. This is what will be included in the access control plan document. Uh, it goes through and it just shows, uh, what's, what's the existing condition and then what the recommended conditions may be. Uh, and then again, the table that goes with it outlines for everyone, uh, what the conditions are that would make those changes take place. And with that, I'll go ahead and open it up to questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sprague. Thank you. And Mr. Hayes, are there questions from council? Councilman Flores?
Mr. Sprague, thank you for this presentation. In looking at your map, which, which shows Pueblo Boulevard as Highway 45, you have two other additional highways at 96 and 78. And, uh, if there are problems, uh, I, I've been in discussion with CDOT about the dangers I feel are on 78 that do affect, uh, their, uh, going into Pueblo Boulevard. I'm assuming that, uh, your study is confined to 45 and you cannot take either 96 or 78 into consideration.
That is correct. We, we consider those intersections and where they intersect with Highway 45. But in terms of going beyond basically just the actual access point of those highways, uh, we, yeah, we don't, we don't extend out beyond pretty much if you think of the right of way for Highway 45, we, we, we basically stick within the right of way of Highway 45.
Yeah, at some point we'll, uh, you know, we can have another conversation, but 70, 78 right now, I feel is a, I mean, there's so many dangerous, uh, egress and, uh, exits in that area. That can be verified by accidents and, and people actually dying on that, uh, that need to be dealt with, but I guess that's for another conversation. That need to be dealt with, but I guess that's for another conversation.
Yes, and I don't know, I don't want to speak too much for C dot. I don't know if Valerie or if somebody else has anything they want to fill in, but yes. Um, you know, us- usually what C dot does is they'll, they'll, they try to look at all their highways and. And do access control plans where they, they think they are necessary. And I'll let Valerie jump in here now, but maybe seventy-eight is on her list.
Hi, good evening again. My name's Valerie Beale with C dot on the permits program manager. And Mr. Flores, we do actually, we had, um, it's been many years ago now, but we did do. A study, we had a consultant and we did a study for Highway seventy-eight. It never came to fruition. We couldn't get the, the agreement, excuse me, the intergovernmental agreement signed. Cause we had just, there were some, uh, some issues that we could not. Get fine tuned enough, but we, we, we have a good starting point if we ever want to look at that corridor again.
Is there a, a possibility of getting that preliminary study just to look at it? I've had occasion to meet with the director about what I feel. Uh, is some real dangerous issues with that highway. And it would be good to have a starting point.
I'm, I'm happy to share what, what we have so far with you. Yes. So what is the best way to get that to you? Maybe I can share with Andrew and he can get it to you?
Yeah, send it to Andrew and, and he can get it over to me. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
What other questions are there from council? Um, Mr. Sprague, I'm hopeful that you can clarify something. So, um. You know, I'm thinking about where Colorado forty-five is. There's a lot of undeveloped land right there. Um, and I, I know that right now we're really trying to push development and growth in Pueblo. Wouldn't it, like in other communities that have done something similar, wouldn't it put a burden on developers wanting that land once this? Plan is implemented because then they have to. Do the amendment? Can you talk a little bit more about that?
Sure, no, absolutely. No, I mean, the, the purpose of this is really to help streamline it for the developers. I mean, we. We go through and we don't, we don't say, hey, look, there can be no access along here. We, we look at it and we say. What's the best approach to, we, we don't want there to be an access every fifty feet, but we also understand that there has to be access for development. So we, we look at where that access would make the most sense in the future. One, we have, we have to look at what the category of the highway is. Two, we, we want to look at where part. Property lines are, where there are even developable property. And you know, some of that may not be developable. And then we try to then make recommendations for where that would go. So. You know, here's a, here's an intersection here, here's an intersection here, here's an intersection here. And we try to make sure then that all those parcels along there would have either access to. Some road that could be built from that access out, or they would have direct access then to the highway in that area.
And with the other, um, excessive, like the access that's currently on Clark, Clark forty-five, there's a school right there. There are several, um, driveways along Colorado forty-five. Does then the property owner of a driveway then have to? Like, how does, how would that work?
Yeah, so that like the driveways, the driveways, when you actually see the plan, like we will recommend that those driveways be closed. But under the conditions and it's, it's laid out that more than likely those driveways will, will never be closed until. They sell the house or they redevelop the house. Um, or somebody comes and buys it and builds a new home. And at that point in time. That's where the city and C dot could get together and say, well, if you're going to rebuild the house, why don't we just? Make the driveway over here onto the side street instead of out on to directly on to the highway. But certainly, you know, if that's their driveway today, it's their only way to get into their property today. You're not going to have a, a situation where we're going to go or C dot's going to show up, knock on the door and say, hey, look, you gotta. You got, we're going to close your driveway and you gotta get access over here somehow. You gotta re, redevelop. It's so for those you, you'll see in a, a closure recommendation, but it's, it's really intended to be long-term. If, if those people live in their home for another thirty, forty years and they never do anything and there's no redevelopment. Then that, that driveway would continue to stay there and function as it is today. Uh, but only if they were to like rebuild, redevelop, then. We would say, hey, this is the great chance to not have cars pulling directly onto the highway. We can utilize that side street and benefit them that way. Does that make sense? And the, and the schools, obviously, you know, the school is there, has to stay there. It needs to continue its access, but. I believe and, and Valerie might be able to clarify on that too, but I believe the school has, there is some agreement with some of the access at the school that. If the school was ever to go away or redevelop, then some of the, some of their, um, access would, would go away because it's only there now to provide them like. Access into their teacher parking lot or, or what have you.
There questions at all?
Okay.
I was gonna add one little point. The implementation of the plan piece, the part that, uh, David mentioned there where, I guess, what is this going to look like to a developer to somebody who comes in to? You know, ask for a project. Normally we, uh, have discussions at what we call our subdivision review or development review committee meetings Wednesdays. And so when folks come in, they'll actually be engaged with, uh, members of city staff. Uh, outside utilities, including C dot as well. They're, they're, they're present at those meetings. Uh, so if this plan was implemented and there was a closure or a consolidation of accesses that would be required as part of their project. We'd be working with that developer to try to identify, uh, the best possible way to get that access. So there may be, uh, taking access from an existing road and, and coming up with cross lot agreements or. Uh, other, other methods that might be needed. So. I guess I just want to kind of throw out what that might look like to a developer, to a builder that might come to us for a project.
And I, I think that the other round of public meetings is in May. Is there a specific date for that yet?
Uh, no, we're just now starting the planning phase. We're going to reach out to, um. And I'm probably going to say the name wrong, but it's the Pueblo Academy of Art. Is that? The name of it there along the highway there, we, that's where we had the meeting last time. So we're in the process of talking to them and, and identifying the best date in early May that will fit on their, their calendar. Um, and then we'll get the advertisements out, uh, middle of, middle of April, middle toward the late half of April and. Start getting it in newspapers and, and, and getting the information out.
Great. Well, we look forward to that date. Thank you, Mr. Sprague and for everyone, um, joining us today from C dot. If there's no further questions, we will move on. The next, um. Work session presentation that we have is the review of city engineering standards, details and specs. So. Mr. Hayes, you're already up there whenever you're ready.
All right, last evening or last event of the evening. Thank you again for letting this be a public works heavy meeting tonight. I made it really heavy by giving you the boat anchor that is our city construction sta- specifications and standard details. So this particular document, uh, represents a collection of very technical, but, uh, very important. Uh, specifications and drawings that outline how we. Construct our public improvements for the city. So. Public Works Department in coordination with other departments responsible for managing the city's public infrastructure systems. Develops construction standards and specifications that apply to all city projects. Standards also applied to construction work performed by developers and builders responsible for constructing public improvements. In residential, commercial and industrial developments within the city. These standards ensure that public infrastructure can safely meet the needs and demands of the public. That the city remains in compliance with state and federal law. And that city responsibly approaches, approaches the management of the total lifecycle cost. Of constructing, operating and maintaining its infrastructure systems. Standards generally do not specify what types of improvements must be constructed for a given project. But they do address the required quality, materials, dimensions, capacities and other physical and functional characteristics for public infrastructure systems. City staff from each of the departments that manage and operate these systems have worked diligently since January of twenty twenty-one. To review each section to ensure the document is aligned with industry standards. The required materials, designs and construction practices meet the public's needs. And that all the specified materials are readily available in the local marketplace. Staff also compared the city standards with those of state agencies and other municipalities along the front range. To ensure that the revised standards would not create any competitive disadvantage for Pueblo's continuing development as compared to neighboring cities and communities. Since October, the public works department has, uh, staff has engaged with the committee on community development. Made up of local engineers, designers, builders, developers, representatives in Petco and even city council members. Uh, to review and provide feedback on the updated content. Meetings and discussions have also been held with local material suppliers. Feedback received as a result of these interactions has been considered and appropriate revisions have been made throughout the review process. The public works department desires to continue working with this committee. And other stakeholders on an annual basis to discuss specific areas of concern and any issues that may arise over time with respect to the standards. So I guess what I'm getting at there, the last part is that we've had a pretty extensive public, uh, input process where we have, uh. Worked through that committee, uh, with the local developers and builders to. Uh, offer the, the draft specifications, receive feedback and work through concerns that they have raised. The tabs that you see in the, in the printed copy here are, uh, a few of the areas where they had raised some specific concerns. Many of them center on quality control requirements. Uh, we have worked with them to kind of, uh, uh, address the concerns, I guess, that they've raised. But I wanted to make sure that you're aware at least of what was, what was raised and so that there, uh, make you aware that there has been discussion on those topics. Uh, in addition to quality control, there's also been some concern about, uh, very specific topic of cold weather concrete placement. Cold weather concrete placement, uh, when, when concrete's placed at low temperatures, uh, chemical, uh, I'm sorry, concrete is a, uh, chemical. Cures by a chemical hydration process. When freezing temperatures occur, it slows that process down. It's typically we can protect the concrete with blankets or heat, uh, down to about fifteen degrees. Different levels of protection, uh, but below fifteen degrees, that temperature gets down there, particularly when the concrete is green or new, as we say. Those, uh, those, those low temperatures can really affect the, uh, the strength of concrete and. Potentially the long-term lifespan of whatever has been placed. So the standards address some things in here. There was a concern raised about some, uh, very technical sounding, uh, sensors that, that would need to be installed if these temperatures went down to fifteen degrees. Normally, we don't place concrete below fifteen degrees. And so that's a pretty standard process. Most of the time when it's fifteen degrees here, it's also snowing and weather's bad and other things are going on. And so we wait for a few days until that, that, until that, uh, concrete placement can be done properly and we don't risk. These other issues. We regularly place concrete this time of year though, when it's, uh, around freezing temperatures. Uh, you'll see sometimes on some of our projects out there that we've got blankets or other protective measures in place to ensure that the concrete is curing properly. These are normal processes. So I don't want to, um, alarm anybody that we don't place concrete when it's cold, we, we're going to delay the contractor. Typically, uh, particularly these specifications, as mentioned, are not only for developers, but also on our city contracts as well. Particularly for our city contracts, we will give a weather delay where needed in order to, uh, not, not. Uh, you know, if temperature don't allow for the proper placement of concrete. If a contractor desires to place concrete, demands that it be done at those temperatures, there are provisions that allow for them to do that here. And so I bring that up to you just as a matter of, of consideration, should that point be raised to you. Again, most of the other yellow tabs that are in there are deal with quality control measures, uh, testing procedures for concrete. Testing procedures for asphalt, also for earthwork. So we're particularly focused on those areas because those are the, uh, items that we see the most area of defect with, I guess, in terms of. Trench, uh, trenching work that goes on in our streets where we have gone back and seen patches placed and we ended with the. Speed bump or a divot or something else that has happened because the, uh, backfill has not been placed properly. So these specifications are minor adjustments to what was previously in place in some cases. There are no wide sweeping changes here. Uh, the original document was about twenty years old, maybe actually, the original document was, uh, written in nineteen ninety-seven and it's been amended several times. The, uh, amendments have been. Slow and coming lately, I think the most recent was in twenty nineteen, but it was a fairly small one. And prior to that, the most recent amendment before that was in two thousand and five. We'd like to make this, uh, bring this to you, uh, probably on an annual basis with minor changes, minor amendments. Just to keep it fresh with, uh, current construction practices. Ensuring that, you know, the materials that we specify are actually things that we can buy here in our local marketplace. Uh, for instance, uh, there were asphalt mixes in our old design or old asphalt mix designs that are standards. That are no longer available. C dot doesn't buy them and so the asphalt plants here don't make them. So we've aligned some of our asphalt, uh, mixed designs to be, uh, items that are locally available and readily available without having to place special orders. Or incur additional expense to get those items. Ultimately, this, uh, set of specifications would be adopted by council by a resolution. We have committed to the committee on community development, that we are open to continuing the dialogue on any changes that need to come up. Or issues that they might have over the course of the year. If there are hardships incurred as a result of some of the standards that are in here, but. I, uh, present these to you, I guess, this week, uh, in advance of the resolution that will be on the agenda for next week. With that, I will take any questions you've got about our standards.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. What questions are there from council? Council Maestri?
So when you're doing a request for proposal for, say, streets. These specifications will be part of the request for proposal?
That is correct. So these are incorporated by a reference to our contract documents.
They're having to, um. Submit like from a third party testing, quality control, testing for backfill, all of those things, those are all going to be part of. Their contract.
That's correct. So that's standard construction practice that we would have.
We would think until we're hitting the divots and the bumps and the speed bumps and it. Or just even some of the wavy roads that we've had. Cause I mean, the north side was developed and it, it was. Sadly, we've had to probably reconstruct that before some of the other areas of the city.
Right. Some of those roads are about twenty years old and they are, they, they appear much older in some cases.
Yeah, they've been wavy since the beginning. I was kind of wondering who signed them off.
Yeah, we're working to make sure that those, these standards will not allow that kind of thing to happen. Those earthwork specifications particularly deal with compaction and backfill. Uh, that is a particularly big area of concern, more so probably even than the asphalt and the concrete to me. But there are some, certainly some asphalt concerns as well. Concrete ones are relatively minor in terms of right of way, sidewalks, curbs, gutters, curb ramps. But asphalt, we put a lot of that down and, uh, the earthwork that goes in underneath obviously affects the quality of that road. For a long time, once we start, uh, you know, patching or repairing water lines or other things underneath as well.
Alright, thank you, Andrew.
Councilman Flores?
You know, normally, uh, Mr. Vaughn with, uh, Regional Building Authority. Will come every two to three years and indicate that they've, uh. Changed the ISO building specifications in Pueblo and. We have this conversation, uh, I think the last one we were involved with. Involved putting sprinkler systems in single-family dwellings, which everybody blew up about that. But tell us the difference between the ISO construction industry standards and then our own standards. I'm naive. I, I would have thought that we have to follow the same ISO standards as everyone else.
So the, the codes that you're referring to, that, uh, Director Vaughn, uh, I guess comes to you, uh, with new, uh, requests for adoption. Our building codes, our international gas codes, electrical code, those apply to buildings and structures primarily. So these standards and specifications also affect, uh, structures and public improvements in the right of way, which is uniquely city function. It is not, there's no private property that these apply to. These are, these are city standards for improvements in the public right of way. And so while we set them, we also have a duty to go set them in line with available, uh, materials with current, current practices. Uh, so we've, we've done a lot of work on trying to make sure that these standards are not. Don't vary widely so that contractors have to have special knowledge to come work in Pueblo. That's not what we want. Uh, we certainly want to make, uh, the, the process easy and compatible with. I guess everybody's experience in other municipalities up and down the front range as well, so that we can get work done when we need it.
Thanks for differentiating the two.
Sure, thank you.
So these, those standards don't apply like to a foundation, they could pour a foundation for a house fifteen below.
So they could, they might apply to, I, I should clarify, one piece here. So on a. So on a city project, if we are doing uh concrete work or building a city building on a foundation, we would apply those concrete standards. Uh, but they do not apply to a private residence. Those are, those are, those are handled by International Building Code. Uh, so these are just going to be material specifications primarily, uh, because there's so many different kinds of concrete or asphalt activities that we do. Uh, they'll apply uh across the board to city projects. So I, Paulus, that is a great point that it could apply to a building, vertical building project for a city project as.
They do, but they do apply to curbs and gutters, sidewalks, things like that.
That's great. Those are, those are.
And a developer might want to come in and pour a sidewalk or a curb and gutter at fifteen degrees. These standards are there to basically, basically protect the consumer. They sell the property because if you pour a uh concrete and it doesn't cure properly, it's going to deteriorate a lot faster.
And the the sidewalks and curbs and gutters you're mentioning, although they are obviously direct improvements in front of somebody's home, they are in the right-of-way, and so they are public improvements.
Yeah.
Uh, so these are, those are specification, those specifications are controlled by these right here.
I should say we've come a long way in terms of that committee and uh the city departments in terms of coming together with the developers and the uh builders out there.
And I appreciate your engagement on there as well. That was, it was helpful having uh uh those discussions to make sure that we're getting the feedback from the community that uh, you know, we're not doing this in a vacuum.
Oh, it should be said also, uh, one other complaint was uh projects not being uh reviewed by the city in a timely manner. We're hoping that OpenGov kind of solves that problem a little bit. Yeah, because uh it it did take a long time, and that was one of their complaints, but uh, things are working out.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Um, really fast, going back to the um OpenGov. I kept saying, um, seeing Pueblo Place. Is it called Pueblo Place or OpenGov?
So Pueblo Place is the city's name for this platform. It's, I believe it's uh Pueblo Licensing and permitting licensing and uh, no, sorry. There, I'll have to get to the end. The place was the easy term for, totally for, thank you. That's exactly what it was. So uh, but it is, uh, OpenGov is the company that provides this platform. The city's instance of it is called Pueblo Place, so it's an easy uh way to access off of our city website. Uh, the the pueblo.us slash place rather than a long OpenGov or something, something else that folks would have to access.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other comments or questions from council? Seeing none, thank you so much, Mr. Hayes. Um, the next um topic in our agenda is executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and oh, gosh, sorry. So I can get a motion though first.
There you go. Um, Ms. Solano? Do you, I'm, I'm sorry. You had discussed um the ARPAS funds that we're going to be reviewing? And those are from which meetings again?
Uh, two twelve, two twenty-two, and three-three. And I can send you the list and the amounts and the, and the um, requestor.
Okay, because I was, I was looking for a work session video and it seems like I don't have one for two. Are you sure it's not two fourteen?
Two fourteen.
Yeah, because I need the work session video loaded for two fourteen. It's not, it's not on the website. Just so I can review some of those things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I move to go into executive. Stay for six seconds. All right, Laurie, I'm going to motion. Okay. I move to go into executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators under CRS Section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four E. And the following additional details are provided for identification purposes. To instruct negotiators regarding first, a proposed sale of real property owned by the city of Pueblo, and second, a proposed purchase of real property by the city of Pueblo.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.